Did you call us?
Okay, I call this goal-setting workshop with the Delray Oaks City Council to order. You have a roll call please.
Councilmember Clark, here. Councilmember Lucilio, here. Councilmember Alian, here. Councilmember Carl, here. Mayor, here.
Thank you for all for showing up. This could be a very, very important workshop. The council will be discussing primarily what we're going to be doing with our possibilities of revenue raising or whatever with regard to the golf driving range. Of course, the golf driving range is connected, it's part of Work Memorial Park, it goes from all the way to the base of Safeway, all the way down to where we have the recreational and food storage. Of course, we're talking about this area, we may spill over because what we are talking about revenue generation or what we can do to help the citizens of Delray Oaks in a seventy acre site right now, this negotiation. We have three hundred and forty acres out of Ford Ward. So, the discussion will be primarily with regard to the golf driving range, but there may be some other ideas. We're looking at cross-bournealization of ideas from the council. We'll be asking for feedback from the audience. You're on, yes. We have some very experienced people out there with a lot of time here in Delray Oaks. We all have Delray Oaks' best interests at heart. And the more ideas we get, the more we can discuss this, I think we'll have the best ideas of what we can do for the city. We're looking right now at a real turning point. The city's gone through some very, very tough times over the last couple of decades. We're now at a turning point where we have three, at least three major possible developments coming down the road. And with the revenue stream that we have coming in there, we can upgrade the quality of life with regard to recreation, with regard to services and so forth for the citizens, bring more money in here where, you know, if we want to, we can underground power lines, we can sidewalk some, we can put in the street lamps. We can have a downtown Delray Oaks for the first time that the entire citizenry can go to as a destination, not only for Delray Oaks, but also for people on the peninsula. So, you're going to the Golden Valley Theater, we might have something here in Delray Oaks. The sky's the limit. What we planned out of Ford Ward now is, that's dead. We'll be having town hall meetings, several of them in the upcoming future, again to solicit ideas from the citizenry as to what they want to have out forward. But today, we're going to primarily discuss what's going on with the golf driving range and maybe some spill over ideas there. So, without further ado, our facilitator today will be our city manager, Dan Dawson. He will lead us through the goal-setting workshop. And, Dan, take your light.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming. Very nice to see a somewhat of a crowd here to talk about some ideas and potential uses down there for the golf driving range. I've spoken to many people over the last probably six to nine months about a variety of different uses down there. Why are we talking about this today? We'll kind of bring you up to speed on this. We had a council goal-setting workshop, May twenty-second. And we talked about some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that face the city. We talked about, kind of like what the mayor just said, we talked about, you know, being in survival mode, at least for the last few years. And now, we're kind of changing gears here and getting to a position where we have some opportunities here, one of which is, happens to be the golf driving range. We talked about the strengths that we have. We have a very cohesive city council, and I've heard from a number of people that come and watch our council meetings, either in person or on video, that we have a relatively calm city council, that we work well together. And it's refreshing to see this kind of cohesion that we have on our city council compared to some of the other cities and organizations. So, that's something that this council is really proud of. The council here considers it a strength to be a small city because we can get things done, and we can get things done a lot quicker than a bigger city. It's like get that locomotive going, you know? Kind of, you know, it takes a while for things to get going, and a lot of times, once you get that locomotive going, you find out you're on maybe the wrong track. And then, it takes a long time to stop on that track and back things up. So, being a small city has a lot of advantages, and I can tell you that it's a real pleasure for me having to come from a city the size of Salinas, one hundred and sixty thousand, to a city this size is much more enjoyable. I feel like the council is a lot closer to the community, to the citizens. Your input is heard and acted upon. Another strength that we have is the Safeway store. That's been a big boon to our treasury here, not only with the sales tax and business license fees we collect, but also the result of the support from the citizens and the one-cent add-on sales tax. That's a big strength for us. We have a central location, we're actually right on Park of the Peninsula. And if the Pacific Grove didn't have that as their bottom, I would say that we should steal it from them because we're actually at the park of the peninsula, not Pacific Grove. They're at the edge of the peninsula. So, we're centrally located, we're right next to the Delray Oaks International Airport, I'm sorry, the Monterey Peninsula Airport. We have staff that is extremely experienced, knowledgeable, and in touch with the needs of the community. We have our own standalone police department, which again, is very involved in the community. We have the three hundred and sixty acre site out on the former Ford Ward, which we're right now on the verge of selecting the very qualified group, a team, to kind of partner with us and get things going in partnership with the community to move that forward and listen to what people want out there. We have a good mix of residential and commercial. We have probably the most parkland out of any city on the peninsula per resident. We have a lot of parkland, and we're in negotiations to actually add on to that and make that a natural connector between the old Delray Oaks here and with this to become the new Delray Oaks out on the Ford Ward land. We have citizen support, probably more so than any other city on the peninsula. We have an outstanding citizen action committee that's really involved in the parks, city hall beautification, an annual picnic, the garage sale, which is coming up this weekend. We've all come to know and love Garage Sale George. The citizens' action committee is very involved. They kind of stand alone apart from the city, they solicit input from citizens. And we have the best weather on the peninsula parkland. Some of the weaknesses we identified at the last meeting, we're a small city. That can be a weakness and it can be a strength. We don't have some of the resources some of the larger cities have. We have a small, very small and aging, and aging staff, and that includes me. I hate to say it, grandmother. Soon to be seven. You know, and if you read the A-Cord, you see I made comparisons for the city of, you know, less than seventeen hundred. We have a full-time staff of eleven people. Compare that to the city of Carmel by the Sea with thirty-four hundred residents, they have staff of seventy-five, and a budget that's seven times what our budget is in our general fund. Granted, they have oceanfront, they have a different base of resident and tourists and so forth, but that kind of gives you an idea of the limitations in our resources that we have here. We don't really have a town center. The council will identify that as a potential weakness. We don't really have Main Street Delray Oaks. You know, maybe at Main Street Delray Oaks, well, where is that? We really don't have one. So, you know, maybe that's a good idea for out on the property on Ford Ward, to have some kind of a main street village-type setting out there. And we have aging infrastructure, you know, we keep it up as best we can. The air conditioner here is working now, it's quiet, we have replaced the air conditioner from the time that we had a water JPA meeting here. We have a limited capacity here of thirty-eight. Many of you may know this used to be a fire station for the city seaside. We're sitting right where the fire trucks were parked right here. So, you know, we're a small and humble city, and we take care of what we have. And another potential weakness is, you know, we have Canyon Delray Road, we have Highway two eighteen that separates the haves and the have-nots. Or you could, you know, we have this, you know, major traffic artery right down the middle of our city, and that's kind of our main street right there. And, you know, don't go too slow, or you're going to get rear-ended, so, you know, that presents a challenge, you know? How do you unify a city that has a major thoroughfare right down the middle? And it's been done in other places, and they can be done here. And then, I believe this last weakness came from either the haves or have-nots on one side, where they have above-ground utilities that present a challenge to the ocean view. So, those are some of the strengths and weaknesses. I thought it was a great, you know, it was the first time that we'd ever actually gotten together as a council and talked about these kind of things. You know, finally getting out of survival mode, let's take a look at where we're at. You know, we can take a look at, okay, well, where do we want to go? So, the opportunities that we came up with are, you know, the three hundred and sixty acre site, obviously, the golf driving range land, relationships with the international airport next start. We have a committee that meets with the board members of the airport that's actually meeting tomorrow, Mayor Clark, Councilmembers Alian. We'll be meeting tomorrow with myself, with the folks at the airport, and talk about a number of issues where we can help each other out. And then, we have threats, you know? The economy is always, that looming threat out there is, you know, is it going to get better, is it not? Can we predict what our revenues are going to be, or can we not? And, you know, what are our contingency plans if things don't work out like we thought we could? We have a very good suggestion, which we will have at a, probably in our mid-year financial review, where the council will want to establish a reserve policy for the city. Legal actions are always a threat. Anyone can sue anything for any reason, right Chris? Whether it has merit or not. Water is a big issue. The mayor sits on the Peninsula Water Management District, otherwise known as the Water JPA, talking about the future of water on the peninsula. And, you know, there's a looming deadline in December of 2016 that there has to be some replacement water developed for all of the Cal Am water supply that's been coming in Carmel River. There's a workshop actually this week at the California Public Utilities Commission in San Francisco, and their sole project that they're looking at now is a California American Water Project, which includes a desalinization facility, aqua storage and recovery, which is where in wet years, they can take water and actually pump it into the seaside basin, and a groundwater recharge, which is tertiary treated wastewater, and then also goes back into the ground and is eventually pumped out to use as a drinking water supply. State and county government, you know, always kind of a threat, you know, with kind of conditions, state budgets in, you know, the numbers change on a daily basis. You know, what's a few billion dollars between friends, you know? Whether it's fifty billion dollars in debt or, you know, a hundred billion, we don't know. Where are they going to get that money? In the past, they've kind of said, oh, well, you know, the local cities don't need this money, we'll just take that. The latest was, you know, redevelopment. Well, you don't need really redevelopment agencies anymore, we'll just take all of your assets, and, you know, we'll fix our problems, and you can kind of worry about that. We, in a way, were real lucky because our redevelopment agency never really got off the ground. We had never developed anything out on our former Ford Ward, which we had placed into a redevelopment area. We'd never built anything, therefore, we'd never increased the property value, and therefore, no tax increment was ever realized from that property. So, there was nothing for the state to take. So, that kind of sums up, you know, our last discussion, our last strategic planning session. And we agreed that at this time, we would kind of just focus on one thing, and the council chose that this time, we would focus on the golf driving range property, with, you know, what's the highest, the best use for it? How do we solicit public input, see what they would like? So, here we are. And, you know, this is kind of meant to be a free-flowing discussion. I can tell you some of the ideas that I've heard, you know, people calling up or sending emails, they've talked about, well, first, I think, let me kind of pass these out to the council. These are maps here of the property. I'll pass this around up here as well, larger range. Do you know where the driving range is as you're coming up? These are actually two pair of maps, this is when they developed the drainage and the holes for the driving range down there. Kind of gives you an idea of some of the planning and action we need for that first. What I've done, in response to requests from the council, in our quest for increasing our revenue to the city, is I had the property surveyed and broken down into three leasable areas, which the council may or may not choose, you know, to go in that direction. But basically, what it does is it observes about a third of an acre, which is the shop lease area, as it's called down there, which is the building. There's two buildings down there that would be to the south of the clubhouse down there. One of them contains pumping equipment for seaside sanitation district. And the other one is about twelve hundred and fifty square feet, that's vacant, that the golf driving range is used to store equipment. So, people have asked me, mostly contractors and so forth, hey, you know, what are you going to do with that building down there? You know, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have a place to put my materials and equipment kind of thing. There's a potential lease area. The second one would be the driving range itself and the clubhouse, which consists of about nine and a half acres, nine point six acres. And then, the third lease area, the small road that goes behind Safeway is actually a city street called Wilson Drive. And at one time, Safeway, and we're still in, you know, kind of in negotiations with the economy, you know, they're not as, how shall we say, enthusiastic about the ideas they once were, but we had been talking to Safeway about building additional parking there because of the limitations that they have, and they're tough parking lot, seems to be full pretty much all the time. That Safeway down there houses nine district office people, that serve nine different Safeway 's in this area. And that would be the third leasable area called Wilson Drive Lease Area, that's about three and a half acres. And we estimated at one time that that acreage would allow the city to build, to lease that area to Safeway so that they could build about seventy-seven, between sixty-five and seventy-five individual parking spaces. There's some issues with, you know, potential flood areas down there, and I might add also, you know, the central part is, the nine point six acres is right along Canyon Delray Creek, and it has flooded down there toward the back Safeway. So, that limits kind of what can be done with the property down there, something you have to consider, you know, whether you'd want something that's permanent or semi-permanent or not permanent at all. So, let's see, those are the lease areas. So, let me tell you some of the ideas that people have called, asked about. Well, the first use of course is, you know, why don't you just open another golf driving range down there? And, I guess probably, I've heard from ten people, they thought it would be a great idea. And I can count on less than one finger how many people have actually come back with a proposal to discuss. You know, it seems like a great idea, it seems like, okay, if everyone knows there's a golf driving range here, let's continue and do another golf driving range there. You know, I'd ask people for business plans and so forth, and they don't come back with anything, and that could mean, you know, I think what it means to me is they looked at the numbers, kind of figured out, well, this is going to take to do some deferred maintenance down there, what they would need to generate income, and that doesn't cost a lot, basically. It's not economically feasible for someone to operate a golf driving range down there. And that's kind of been, that's kind of what happened with the last group that was in there, you know? Once the economy kind of tanked, there just wasn't enough business to keep it going, even at a real favorable lease rate. The lease, you know, this is called public information, the lease that the city was getting was about eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for all three of these lease areas for that whole property down there. And the business that the city was still unable to make at Delray Oaks. There's a variety of reasons why that may have occurred, I'm not going to guess what those are, but that's an idea that people have talked about. I'm bringing back the driving range. BMX track. BMX track, there's, you know, people have talked to me about that. There's a, there's a American Bicycle Association that actually will sponsor opening, the opening of tracks, they'll help you to lay out the track, they have their own insurance, that wouldn't require anything to be built. There's groups within the county here that do that now, but they're way out in the crum down. That's a potential.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit? I don't, BMX track is?
Bicycle track, like a mountain? You guys know what BMX tracks are?
Yeah, we see them here, or is it just we're observing?
They're like the steep ones.
It'll be open to public comment. Come get open it up in just one minute, I just want to go over a couple more of the ideas. Okay, so BMX track, golf driving range, RV park, a rec center slash sports bar, a daycare center, city hall relocation for the city manager's office with the golf driving range intact. Yeah, it's easy. And then, lease it out to another agency, you know, see what they would like to do with it. So, that's it. That's the end of my presentation, those are the ideas I've received, that's how the property's been split up, there's some of the limitations, and it's wide open.
Let me cover a couple of things too, just for background, so you all know where we're coming from. A number of years ago, Mr. Roscoe, who's a local developer, was actually looking seriously to put a Lotus Hardware Store down there. He was serious, he was putting money into the city, and he had a couple of PI, environmental impact report personnel will take a look at it, and determine that based on, it's considered a, it is considered a flood plain. And they felt that if I tried to do that, the litigation would be so difficult that it would not be worth putting any major structure down there that would be a permanent-type structure, that's number one. Number two, that's part of what's called the Work Memorial Park I mentioned earlier, theoretically is there for the good of all of our residents in this area. So, putting an construction site down there, whatever, that's, there's no way we can do that because we want to honor Mr. Work and his generous contribution to the city. We want to minimize the traffic. For a while there, we were looking at, we were looking at putting an old age home, there's some other developments that we're looking at and tying in to via Verde, and you don't want to have, it's bad enough in the morning there as it is, you want to minimize traffic. Now, we do have the road, what's the name of that road again? Wilson Drive, so, I mean, technically, you do that, but you can imagine, there might, with a lot of traffic, that can also be very difficult. You've got Safeway traffic going in, people making a left, making a right, and if you have a major amount of traffic coming through, it would be chaos. And then, we want to bring in something, hopefully, to bring some tax revenue into the city, where we don't want to be, we don't want to prostitute ourselves on the almighty dollar, because if we do something to help our residents and yet bring in tax revenue to upgrade the rest of the city, that would be a goal. Last thing, a lot leasing, we want something we can be proud of, something we point to that the generations down the road will look at that and say, hey, the council, the residents came up with a really good idea down there, we're really going to be proud of it. So, any other members of the council have some comments right now before we pour it out?
I kind of have some comments. I've been kind of talking with neighbors, and walking and talking, just hearing what some of their ideas are. There's been a lot of, and this is something you can kind of think about with our new development coming on, but, you know, perhaps with the new development up there, you know, the developer to help make this a more recreational area. Softball fields are in high demand, and there's not enough around here, and, you know, perhaps we can do the big tournaments that come into Monterey and lease out these fields to all these different organizations. Our soccer fields are hard to come by. It'd be nice if we could have a walking path that was safe through that area to get for our own residents to get to Safeway and that. You know, perhaps with, you know, with the new development going up there, we can just continue on and make this whole some type of addition to the whole park scene, and maybe utilize the existing building as a youth center so that kids can come down there after school, and maybe have a youth program like we used to have at the Old Town Hall, which I think Kathy used to be a part of, where did she go to after school? At the park?
Oh, yeah, it was during the summer that they had it down there.
Yeah, the, you know, some type of recreation area, and perhaps we could charge to, for people outside of Delray Oaks residents, other residents to use the tennis court, you know? Make it a rest area, let the citizens of Delray Oaks agree that, you know, the other citizens want to pay a lot of pay.
My very true.
I don't know, just something to think about, you know, if we could have the developer Safeway, or people can have to chip in.
As Kristen says, at the Delray, we'll be talking about the question of qualifications here following Monday, will be sometime in the future, I mean, in the future. Part of the stipulation that comes under development, you can require them to pay off their, or bill, the PLL insurance bill before, or the REIT authority providing infrastructure development for that land down there. There's all sorts of things we can leverage with that, we are six games, not just build there, but theoretically bring a number of funds to help out a little part of the city as possible.
No, I'm just sort of focusing on, I'm talking about like, the ideas of softball fields and so forth, the place where you go to the San Jose or something, and there's like a, you know, a quad or an eight-field place that everybody that everybody in the community comes to in town. Of course, it's a seasonal kind of thing too, so it's adaptable to, not just come out every year. I think recreation is a great, I'm curious, with so many proposals you've got, if anybody brought anything with a knee on the bone, if you're backing up me.
Here's an idea. There's a lot of that. A lot of, here's an idea. There is a lot of, well, here's an idea, how much money can the city give me to get it going?
Well, you know, something, BMX track, BMX track is on the internet, because I was rehabbing my knee, and I was going to this repair place, and this I was, I'm, I'm, all that, but oh, probably get on there, I know if he might be the guy, it would be a BMX track.
Okay, that's some background information. We're looking for feedback from you all, or anybody else who wants to, I'd ask, if you have some ideas, if you want to just come up and just give us your ideas, if you want to discuss it, we'll take as openly as we can. If you know of anybody that is not here, that has ideas, please have them contact Dan Dawson, our city manager, with ideas, you can email, or you can call down, or send a letter, whatever you want. We're looking at the best possible ideas we can get, so that when we can look at developing some of these ideas, or if other developers come in here and say, we're thinking about this, and we can probe it out, and the city council may be able to make any decisions.
Yeah, hi, I'm Mike Gideon, and I'm in A1 there. Work, I think Del Ros is known for the drive, you say the drive range, everybody knows what that's at. So I think if you have some kind of a name recognition, and that's something, so the skate parks with Laguna Seca, which is big on bicycles, but it's a huge CR concept, you know, we have three, we get, that's just a big, you know, revenue thing. They get the tracks out there that the kids can ride on, so I think that would be, I was thinking when I was coming in about a skate park back in Monterey, if you could provide a two, you know, something for the kids to do. And then something I'd like to see, I, growing up, I was trained in things that don't require maintenance or anything like that. And thanks to the tennis courts growing up, I used to play alcohol racquetball, three-wall court. So a couple of those could just, you know, maintenance-free, and something that, you know, because there are, there are, other than a garden, you got a joint garden, all fitness, there's no racquetball courts anywhere in my two hundred markets. Or handball, handball, exactly, so you have courts, same, same skate out, and things like that. And then one other thing I was thinking of, and that's probably for the bigger, for the different subject of approach, it was a RV parking and boat parking for the residents. You know, a place where they can just gather some off their property, you know, as a courtesy that they can, you know, as storage or anything like that. I can hear it's pretty great, yeah.
Speaking of RV park, and so, that's been an eyesore for, in my personal opinion, I bet you I'm invested in council, right? This is probably by city ball, or highway two eighteen, it looks like Del Ray Oaks, the trailer park. With three hundred and sixty acres out there, we have at least one possible location. On the eastern side, there's a thousand foot wideaway, it's the Olahair County connector, the camp, that Campsey has had on gaps for years and years. You can't build on it because it's a wideaway. We maybe will find a way of moving all these RVs out there, and use, again, this is part of the parking, and memorial parking, extend or park all the way out to have enough RVs around, so that's just another consideration. But other members of the public, please, any ideas or?
Actually, yes. I'm Alice Green, I live on Suceido Avenue. And I love what you were saying about tying in, having, you know, having the developer people, whoever they end up being, you know, and sort of trying to tie the whole thing together. And thinking of everything tied together, like with, you know, pedestrian overpasses and that kind of stuff, and wanting to be involved in. You know, so that, like you were saying, the community is divided by this road. And I, anyway, I just love what you were saying about that, and whoever brought that up, I mean, that sounded good to me. So how would that place itself down?
Since we're talking about if I need to build on one thing, and actually, Kristen, this was her idea initially, and that is, if you look at Del Ray Oaks, we are separated, we have two eighteen down the middle. And right smack down the middle, most valuable area that we have in Del Ray Oaks is the, is the business park. And in that business park, we have massive storage units that produce no tax revenue, they're just boxes. So you've got the most valuable territory in Del Ray Oaks, a bunch of boxes there, that can't be used by the residents, not producing any tax revenue whatsoever. I'm thinking down the road, you know, once we start getting some money coming in here, just like Monterey did on the, with their windows in the bay, which were just a bunch of old buildings and so forth, do a phased removal, where you start out next to Stone Creek, and then the first sets of boxes, move them out to four doors, some land out there. You develop that as a downtown Del Ray Oaks, phase two, phase three. As money comes in, we're not, I would say, not to hurt the businesses, but to provide incentives where they would want to go to a different location, where they're not being hurt. Free up all that in there, make that the downtown Del Ray Oaks, walking paths with lights and so forth. You know, people on the south side of the city can walk down there, or ride their bikes. North south of the city can go through the park down there as a destination, right smack dab in the middle of the city. You've got Del Ray Oaks downtown, like a Golden Mile Theater, parks, benches, destination-type things where we can really make the city a true city, the center of the city. And all those, those boxes can be moved out there along with the RV and so forth. We could, with the money coming out there, we could transform the city where we could really have truly the jewel of the Monterey Peninsula. That's sort of tied in, I just thought I'd throw that out, for people to think about, and come up with some better ideas to how we could do it, what would it look like, what are those type of activities you'd want to go to? You think so, or you walk down a nice lighted path down there? What would you want to do there evening, from six until nine o'clock or so? Time in the Stone Creek. Those are things we can do with the money coming in here.
I'm a broad, that saw, that same idea was brought up about fifteen years ago. So it's, for us, it's not a new idea.
Okay, well, it's the first time I heard it, so.
Yeah, and then how would you deal with the AT&T storage area down there?
We have, we have, I hate using this term, I'm not, I'm not, as a businessman, I don't want to encourage businessmen, okay? But we have the power of eminent domain, for good of the city, we can use the power of eminent domain to move for good of the city, personnel, or businesses, or whatever, from point A to point B. Again, we provide tax incentives, land incentives, all sorts of incentives where a business will say, yeah, that's a pretty good deal, now we'll go over there. Free the land in the middle of the city where we can build that downtown that you want, whatever destination we want to have down there, we can do it. I mean, once, once that money starts coming in from the, under the old federal LLC, it was a five-phase project. Phase one alone was going to produce a million dollars a year in debt. A million, our budget's two and a half million. So you're looking at a million dollars of your debt with no other expenses. That's a lot of money coming to a small city we can use to really develop in these areas, and do the things we really want to do with the city. After, in phase two, three, or four, you're looking at three, four billion dollars a year coming in here. We can do whatever we want to. Other, other ideas or comments?
I just remembered, I had people asking what about a miniature golf, down with driving range along with Kristen's idea? And just make it all like a rec, because there's no miniature golf places for anyone around there. San Jose, I think, is closest.
Oh, that's right upstairs. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I said, maybe for the, for the drive range, you know, Nike, they have these academies, or Callaway, you get a ring corporate sponsor, they come to, they put their name on it, and they run the whole show, they bring all their money in, and it comes in. An academy hub for people, where they can fly kids in, high school kids, or young kids to come in, and they sponsor it. And they pay the city, Callaway, or Nike, or Titus, wherever it might be. And those are the guys that know the business, they have the money to support it. Obviously, the city can make money off of it, it might be a good thing. I mean, it can piggyback off of, you know, the Pebble Beach, when they have the first tee that comes in.
First tee was looking at that as a possible headquarters. They were there to put this in hand, he was down here, and they went out there, served, I guess they served it, the site, the whole works. They found it was slightly smaller than what they needed. They were using buildings down there for headquarters, and exactly what you're thinking. Although first tee decided that they couldn't do it, it was too small. Again, maybe some other golfing organization might want to do it, because it's a prime location.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other ideas?
It's not an idea, I'm just curious about the floodplain. Why, why is the, if it's a creek down there, why, why can't it continue on out? It's a stupid question, but I, I don't understand why it becomes a backup on the creek. It overflows, but there's no outlet?
When I was dealing with Mr. Orozco a number of years ago, he was afraid of lawsuits initiated by environmental groups to try and keep the development from what's considered legally a floodplain. I mean, yes, any type of problem can be engineered to the point where there's no longer a problem, but there are groups around that do not want development. And you, and there was a tendency for some of those groups to want to litigate, and he felt it wasn't worth the risk of having expensive litigation to try and overcome any type of environmental concern regarding the mud flats.
I think, I think that's a wet land, is what he's referring, he's referring to.
And also, it was back in, I think, ninety-eight or something, where we had that big flood, and the road caved in, and the park was like a lake. The whole park, and then it flooded all the way down to the creek.
Well, in heavy, in heavy rain years. I mean, any, any creek or river is going to overflow sometimes. That's why the land looks the way it does, is because periodically there's a flood. It doesn't happen maybe often, but it happens, and we can count on it happening. So it's just a matter of acknowledging that, but that's what that landscape is, and then dealing with it. So, I mean, it's just going to happen, there's going to be heavy rain years, and things are going to flood. Just like, you know, the Carmel River some years ago, flood. People live right on it, or kind of flood. Just wait.
Mr. Webber here, from Woodson Engineers, probably mapped every bit of this area.
I advise the council, water management is currently in the process of updating the Canyon Del Ray watershed, that's what we're, from modern.
What does that mean, that they're updating the plan?
There was a plan then, back, I believe in the, maybe the early seventies, which looks at the development currently in the watershed, the drainage facilities, drainage structures within the watershed, their capacities, maps the watershed levels of innovation, deficiencies in the system, you know, where the choke points are, what areas may be vulnerable.
Thank you.
Well, and that's exactly how you need to think about all these water systems, are as water shed systems, and not just like that's the creek, but like the entire Lakers and full surrounding area, and how it drains.
Yeah, exactly. And it's been quite a bit, which has developed upstream since nineteen seventy. All the development, it's all been at the high end of the watershed, and not all come down.
Right.
There's been quite a bit, quite a budget changes in the last thirty, forty years.
Any other comments or ideas, questions? I'd like to emphasize, and again, it's just not this one time we're getting together. If you have any ideas whatsoever, please come down and see our city manager, let work, any member of the council, let us know, and we'll, we'll try and pursue any possible plans, make the best use of that, and then, before any decision made, it will be brought before the council, for discussion by the council and by the citizens here, and there'll be a, there'll be a vote as to whether we do it or don't do it, and so it will be as open as we possibly can. Any comments by members of the council?
I wonder when we might consider putting out some kind of request for proposals, formal effort to try and attract? I don't think it's very. Well, the point, the point that you would do that, if we want you to say what it is that you want to do, is so you can specify in the RFP. Yeah, I, normally I would think that makes it, but in this case here, we, we have several ideas that are proposed. So it might be that proposal is very broad in nature, and offers people to come down and say, make a suggestion. Tell us how, how you do it, what would you like to do? Here's the smorgasbord of ideas that have been presented. Maybe sound attractive, how would you make, how would you make it profitable for yourselves, if you're going to say? I don't know what kind of sponsors we can get. One, like asking developers, if they have the opportunity, if they're going to come over, or go somewhere.
One thing that's, city, a lot of governments are doing these days is hiring consultants. So I wonder if there's a consultant to hire that would help, you know, figure out what's the best thing to do down there? With all the ideas that are on the list, and the ones that we haven't heard yet, maybe there's a, somebody who can consult and, for a nominal fee. Not, not only that, no.
We have a great incentive right here, if your argument is, no, but, no, that's, that's a good idea, thank you.
I think if, if we can get this three hundred and sixty acres, what are, two sixty or three sixty?
Three sixty, that's what we're saying.
If, if we can get this three hundred and sixty acre project off, off the mark here, the developer may want to come in and help us figure out what to do. And it could be potentially, if you, if you take the bigger view of what the city could be with that piece of property tied in, then developer may have some ideas on how, how we connect everything together. That's what we're really looking for, is how do we make this city feel like it's one whole park? And not this part over here, that part over there, and that new three hundred and sixty acres over there, and that industrial area down at the end. And maybe we can find the right developer to help us do that. That's a possibility. Doesn't preclude us from doing the other thing, it's possible. We're talking about massive undertaking, and that's why we're eating this elephant one bite at a time. Like, we're taking right now is the drive and range. And I absolutely agree with you and with Vice Mayor Clark, that we can actually make it a condition on the developer out there to make a community rec center down there, or whatever it is that the community wants. It's absolutely.
Within the realm of possible?
No, I'm just thinking about some of the other comments you made, and the leakage just sounds like such a great goal. That's bringing bicycles, you know, you look at the, go on the bay, and the bike trail, and that's getting established. Twenty-four doors is going to end up in San Luis something.
Right.
You know, I mean, if we can have our own leachages within our own city, you know, that was on the spot, I think that'd be very difficult.
You hear, you hear a couple of, you know, you'll get all the trails.
If, for instance, the wet girl, if that would be in consideration, would the city staff that, hire staff, or how would you handle that?
That's wait, that planning is down the road, we have to be able to take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, consider that, what you, how would you staff that?
You know, I have, years ago, I talked to Demi Hale, I don't know if Franklin Genski, I talked to her about trying to get a walking path, whether it be like a boardwalk, something, you know, extending to get down to Stone Creek. And she was doing a study on that forty years ago.
She is, she, we're working on it, the money, I become chair of Campsey next year, so we'll have a, we'll be done next year.
Yeah, so, well, maybe we can incorporate that, that mention with what we want to do, to make it even easier.
It's all, it's all coming together, all, all in one lifetime. You know, all these inputs coming together, and I think the next couple of years, you can see a lot of, a lot of activity in Del Ray Oaks. Any other questions, comments?
I mean, I, I would say that a lot of cities, what they've done is, you know, instead of hiring staff, you can have a nonprofit, right? That's one option.
Yeah, you make a similar parallel, you talk about two eighteen running for your city, you also have Canyon Del Ray Creek running for your city too, which can be a community asset. It could go through a restoration, looking to nonprofit through the vision plant, the criminal value, the criminal value vision plant. That brought up a linkage, we started certain projects along bicycle circulation at the mouth of the valley, slowly working its way up the valley, through the South Lake Trail, and creating linkages. You can do that along Canyon Del Ray, create restoration, up for restoration grounds. You can do bicycle, bicycle trails, pedestrian trails, linkage with the neighborhood. pedestrian trails, linkage with the neighborhoods, and create that vision, how they're going to create that linkage throughout the, throughout the city.
Yeah, the restoration, that, that is such a good idea.
Yeah, the croc horn, another huge community feature that people like to follow.
Okay, I guess, we've covered a lot of information, again, this is just the beginning of the discussion, we'll be, we'll be taking a break here for about ten minutes, our city council meeting starts at six, it should be fairly short this evening, so we welcome everybody to stay along for the city council meeting. Thank you for your interest, as concerned citizens, and providing feedback, we really appreciate it, couldn't do without you. So, with that, the, our study session is, is over, and we'll reconvene in about ten minutes.
Thank you.